A difference of two minutes, and we're gonna go ahead and go with the slower clock 'cause we do not have a quorum. We're gonna go out with the council time, which is 4:58.
Yeah, it's like, it's kinda confusing. Which I'm gonna bring up today because, not about you, but, you know, I called dispatch yesterday, they didn't know anything, and the website says we're closed, and it's like, well, we're not.
Well, the state of Texas.
Yes, sir.
The state of Texas.
No, sir. I'm surprised you're actually even having a meeting, I don't think there's anything urgent that we're doing today, is there?
Yeah, the replay's on a timeline. The replay is on a fixed timeline.
Yeah, but we're in...
It actually is not taking, it automatically approves.
Yeah, but this is kind of unusual times.
Unusual for all of us, Mr. Booth.
Indeed.
So, we're all running on the fly, sir. We don't mean to not provide adequate information. It's uncharted water for everybody.
For sure. Well, kind of. You know, we've had other viruses.
True, not pandemics, though. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was 1918, so it's pretty uncharted.
Well, they lost 12,000 in one, H1N1.
Yeah, that's normal.
We haven't lost 1,000 yet.
Yes, sir.
Have we?
Oh, have we lost?
No, we haven't lost.
No, I think it's still going on, though.
Yeah, no, it's still growing.
Mark Fainer.
What I'm saying is...
Yeah, I'm not gonna prejudge it, I'm gonna wait till it's done and the numbers are ready.
My brand is doesn't get a lot more.
I certainly don't wanna underestimate it.
I thought that it did. I could be wrong. If you're joining us on the phone, we are getting started here shortly.
A thousand people died in the H1N1 before Obama did anything, and 100,000 people had it. I looked it up. So, we're kind of ahead of the curve, if that's possible. Of course, I think China cheated, didn't tell us the truth. Are we starting? Are we missing a few people?
We're missing a few.
Well, this is good.
We are just about getting ready to get started, we're just short, one more member for a quorum.
Is she in there? She's in right now.
Mr. Sanderson, are you with us? Perfect, I think we have a quorum, we're gonna go and get started. The city of Castle Hills has made arrangements for all person, including members of the governing body, who wish to do so, to participate in the meeting by remotely accessing, the phone number is 1-800-717-4201, and the conference ID is 706-7416. Yes, sir, I hear you, Mr. May. We're just getting ready to get started. The city of Castle Hills will convene into a special meeting on April 1st, 2020, at 5:00 PM, in the council chambers located at 209 Lemonwood Drive, Castle Hills, Texas. We're gonna call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. We'll go ahead and do a roll call, given the fact that we're using phones. Place 1, Mr. Joe Isbrand.
Present.
See here, place 2, Mr. Mark Sanderson.
Mark Sanderson, place 2, is here.
Thank you, Mr. Sanderson. Place 3, Kurt May.
Kurt May, present.
Thank you, Mr. May. Place 4, Leslie Winger.
Present.
And place 5, Mr. Douglas Gregory.
Present.
Thank you, council. We will, I don't think we have any plans for an invocation, we'll go ahead and forego that for tonight. Pledge of allegiance, Chief Siemens, would you lead us?
Pledge of allegiance, to the land of the United States of America, which stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, chief. Do we have any citizens to be heard on non-agenda items? Mr. Booth?
Hi, George Booth, 124 Dogwood.
Can you pick the mic up just a little bit, sir? Thank you.
Hi, George Booth, 124 Dogwood. I'm a little concerned about this meeting, that it wasn't posted on the city website, it says the city hall's closed. I called dispatch yesterday, they said they didn't know, and there was some information on Nextdoor, which said we weren't having it, and so, you know, we have to know whether we're gonna have the public able to come to the meetings or not. So, you need to post it on the city website, which it should be, as well as on Nextdoor, I think would be helpful. So, we need accurate information that we are able to come. I would've come last week, had I known we could've come, and I don't know if you allowed people last week or not, but we should've been able to.
Thank you, Mr. Booth.
Mayor, the meeting is online on the Agenda Center, it's also on the Newsflash as well, and the only closure is to the public on a daily basis through April 10th, which is the alert on the website. So, all three of those mechanisms are on the website right now, including this agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have anybody else? Okay, that is it. Thank you, chief. Let me check the email real quick, 'cause we have presidents emailing in. That is still set up, correct, Mr. Rappley?
Yes, mayor.
And just to confirm that everybody that's online, it's citizens to be heard at castlehills-tx.gov. So, if you have anything that you'd like to ask questions about, for the citizens to be heard, or on specific agenda items, you can email it there. Next, we'll proceed to number 1, discussion of possible action on questions concerning the residency of Mark Sanderson. I brought this item forward because I had been asked by several people if Mr. Sanderson does still, in fact, live in the city of Castle Hills. I sent Mr. Sanderson an email, I believe a week or two ago, trying to get confirmation on that, and I did not get a response, so I felt appropriate to bring it before council so we can determine if, in fact, that he still does live here.
May I like to speak on that?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Winger.
You know, I just think that this is a very strange way to be addressing this type of subject. During the last election, a lot of people on South Garden View claimed that you were no longer living in Castle Hills. And, you know, my answer to that is, if you weren't, that was your job to inform people. Your house has also been vacant, according to your neighbors. I don't know, 'cause I'm not going over there snooping about it, and I don't think anybody else should. So, the fact that somebody asks a question about this is no reason to make a presumption. If something were to change, I'm sure that Mark would notify the council as well as you would have. And I just think that this is a really, you know, we're just engaging in rumor mongering, and it's very distasteful.
Ms. Winger, I'd like to clarify, I haven't made any assumptions, I specifically asked Mr. Sanderson if he could confirm that he still did live in the city, and he didn't respond.
Well, he does still own his home.
Ms. Winger.
Yeah.
I asked him in an email if he still lived in the city, to which he didn't respond, and I have brought it forward on the agenda, questioning if he still lives here. I have not made the assumption that he moved out.
Well, but again, you put it on there, and then I understand that, you know, Mr. Isbrand has gone on Nextdoor, you know, touting it as well, so why are we doing this? I mean, it sounds like we're just trying to cause him more problems than we've already caused, which I would say have been sufficient, and we don't need to keep going.
Mayor.
Mr. Isbrand, yes, sir. We'll start from Mr. Isbrand and work our way down the line, for everybody that's on the phone.
Sure, just for clarification, I'm not touting anything, Ms. Winger, except what the agenda for city council meetings is, and if you look at that, you will see that I put on every post that I've made what the agenda of the city council is, and that's all there is to that. I believe Mr. Sanderson is participating in this meeting, we could resolve this right now and move on and get down to business if you would allow that to take place. Perhaps we could simply ask Mr. Sanderson to respond to the agenda item.
Thank you so much.
So, you mean, let me see, you couldn't ask that question without posting it on the agenda, is that what you're saying?
I think what I just said, Ms. Winger, is I sent him an email that he received, and he didn't respond.
Yeah, well, he hasn't been responding to my emails either, so what does that mean? It doesn't mean anything.
So, let's ask him.
Sometimes people don't read their emails.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and bring Mr. Sanderson on, and we can let him speak for himself. Mr. Sanderson, are you with us?
Hi, this is Mark Sanderson, and so, if y'all are going to go ahead and table this, I think it'd be appropriate, because I have a pertinent announcement to the meeting after the conclusion of council. I think that this will go ahead and answer everybody's question at the appropriate time. I am still a taxpaying resident of Castle Hills. I owe my allegiance only to the taxpayer, I do not answer to the mayor nor to the city manager. That is not part of my job description. If you would like to go ahead and table this, I think you'll probably end up saving a lot of airtime, and a lot of time for people to go and talk about it. So, in my opinion, tabling this would be wise, because we're gonna go ahead and settle this issue here shortly. That's it.
I couldn't really hear all that, Mr. Sanderson, just to confirm, you're not gonna answer whether you live in the city, is that correct?
I never said anything stuff like that at all. What I said was, and let me go ahead and repeat it, after a city council meeting, I have a pertinent announcement. I still consider myself a taxpaying resident of the city of Castle Hills. I do not answer to the mayor, nor do I answer to the city manager. They are not my boss. My bosses are the people who elected me, nobody else. Now, if you wanna go ahead and make this simple and easy, just go ahead and table this, and then let's go ahead and move on to all the other agenda items. I have a pertinent announcement after council. Very simple.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanderson, we're gonna go and move on to Mr. May down the line. Give me one second to unmute Mr. May. Mr. May, are you with us? Mr. May?
I have no comments at this time. I'm gonna be there shortly, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Gregory, did you have any comments?
Mr. Sanderson, the announcement that you're going to make after the close of the meeting, does it have anything to do with this agenda item?
Let me unmute him real quick, give me one second, Mr. Gregory, so he can respond. Mr. Sanderson, did you hear Mr. Gregory's question?
So, I didn't hear the question, and, you know, I'm not really sure I should be answering these questions right here, they're not really pertinent, and again, I don't answer to anybody except to the taxpayers, the people who voted me in, that's it. So, as far as that's concerned, if we can table this matter, I can make an announcement, we move on. All the other extra stuff is just that, extra stuff.
Well, then I'd like to move to table.
Okay, we have a motion to table? Do we have a second?
I second that.
A second by Mr. Sanderson. We're gonna do roll call vote for being on the phone, Mr. Isbrand.
No.
Okay, that's a no by Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Sanderson?
Yay.
A yes by Mr. Sanderson. I'm not sure, Mr. May, how do you vote?
Mr. Mayor, I'm having a hard time hearing with the background. I'm gonna be there in about nine minutes. Can you repeat the question?
Yes, sir, we're voting, Ms. Winger made a motion, Mr. Sanderson seconded on the motion to table this agenda item. I'm asking how you vote.
Okay, so we're taking a vote now, is that correct?
Yes, to table, yes, sir.
I vote no on that motion.
Thank you, Mr. May. Ms. Winger.
Yay.
Mr. Gregory.
No.
Okay, motion to table fails? Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Gregory, I think you were talking when Ms. Winger made the motion.
Well, the local code is very simple, and a simple yes or no could just move on to anything else. It says, let's see, 22.008B, if a member of the governing body changes the member's place of residence to a location outside the corporate boundaries of the municipality, the member is automatically disqualified from holding the member's office, and the office is considered vacant. So, the council doesn't say yes or no, this is what the, at least, I don't think so, this is just simply saying, if you don't live here at the time, and you live someplace else, you're automatically disqualified. So, my question simply is, do you live here? Do you have, I know, you have furniture in the house, do you have?
Well, I would like to say that the same situation applies to Mr. Sanderson as it applies to you. He is still a resident, he still owns his home here, and you still own your home here, albeit, it isn't necessary to own a home here, you have to simply live here to be a resident, but his situation is the same as yours.
Ms. Winger, with all respect, I would disagree, because if you asked me a question, I would answer and tell you that I do live here and where I live.
But he did answer, and he said that he is still a resident of Castle Hills. Now, if that changes, he'll let you know, and whether that's gonna be at the end of the meeting, or tomorrow, or, you know, a month from now, just as with you or anybody else, you know, obviously, people are gonna let you know if they're no longer living here.
So, you said he...
But it's very offensive, and I think that's what he's responding to, it's very offensive to have this brought up in this manner, this has never been done before, and the suggestion is that somebody has become a non-resident and has failed to say so. That's not what's happened, it's just simply that you've decided to put this on the agenda because of rumors that are incorrect.
Well, Ms. Winger, I asked him in an email very nicely, and he didn't respond, and Mr. Sanderson has said that he has no responsibility to respond to me, the city manager, or Mr. Gregory, so I'm not sure how I should've handled it. You just said that he is a resident?
He did, he said he's still a resident, he said that.
I missed that, let me just confirm, did anybody else hear that? Mr. Sanderson, I'm gonna take you off mute, can you confirm that you said that you are still a resident? If so, I think that resolves this situation.
I said that I was a resident, a taxpaying resident, and I do not owe apologies or explanations to anybody except for the taxpayer.
Okay.
I think that's a waste of time, I told you that I already had a pertinent announcement, which is going to occur this evening, after the conclusion of the meeting.
Okay.
I don't know why we're talking about this, I don't know what kind of actions can possibly you can take anyhow, and, you know, to me, this is a complete waste of time. This needs to be tabled, moved on to the next item, and do the rest of the agenda. I have no idea why we're doing this, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, well, Mr. Sanderson, the fact that you said you are still a resident, you still live in Castle Hills, that's all that we were looking for, thank you so much for that. If there's no further discussion?
No.
We will proceed to item number 2, a discussion of possible action on the extension of the Second Declaration of Local State of Disaster and Public Health Emergency executed by Mayor G.R. Trevino on March 26, 2020. I'm going to have Mr. Schnall provide us an update on this.
This is Paul.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fletcher.
And I'm on 2, Mayor.
Whichever one of y'all would like to speak, we're ready.
Well, the provisions of Chapter 418 of the Government Code provide for the mayor's declaration to be in effect for up to seven days. At the end of that period, a governing body has the authority to renew or extend the mayor's declaration. In view of the executive orders issued by Mayor Nierenberg of San Antonio and Bear County Judge Nelson Wolf, as well as the executive order proclamation by Governor Abbott issued yesterday, it would seem appropriate for the governing body to consider authorizing the extension of the mayor's March 26, 2020, Second Declaration of a Local State of Disaster and Public Health Emergency until April 30th, which is when I believe the governor's executive order is to terminate.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall, Mr. Isbrand.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we extend the Second Declaration of Local State of Disaster and Public Health Emergency executed by Mayor Trevino on March 26, 2020 through April 30th, 2020.
Second.
All seconded, ma'am.
Second, Mr. Gregory beat you to that one, Mr. Sanderson.
I second it, Mr. Sanderson, but whoever wants to second it, sign it to me.
Okay, thank you so much. Discussion.
I would like to know, given the governor's declaration, I guess it was yesterday, why we even have to vote on this? Because there's nothing left, if the governor decides what's what with the state.
Mr. Schnall, did you hear that? Mr. Fletcher?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
I couldn't hear Housewoman Winger speaking at the mic, it might be better.
Okay, and Mr. Schnall just got back on too, so y'all can decide who wants to answer, but Ms. Winger's question was, if the governor has already made a decision for the state, then why do we have to make a decision at the local level?
Okay, and Mayor, this is Mark. One of the problems with this whole system is that phones disconnect without you wanting them to. If I heard Ms. Winger, the portion of Ms. Winger's question that I think I heard before I was cut off, Paul...
I'm having trouble understanding.
...was, why are we doing this since the governor issued his proclamation yesterday? The answer to that is that, in order to preserve the city's right to obtain certain assistance from funds that may be available under the new federal legislation, as well as other funds in the state, it's important to have urgency declaration that remains active. And the declaration that covers the city is appropriate for that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall, Ms. Winger, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Do we have any further discussion? Okay, in that case, we'll proceed with the roll call vote, Mr. Isbrand.
Aye.
Mr. Sanderson?
Aye.
We got a distant eye as he's walking in, thank you, Mr. May. Ms. Winger?
No.
Okay, Mr. Gregory?
Aye.
Okay, passes 4 to 1. Next, we have discussion of possible action on May 2nd, 2020, general election for the city of Castle Hills. So, I have some news, I contacted both, we only have one contested race, I contacted both participants and asked them, in the interest of public health, in the interest of moving things forward, if either one of them would consider not running so we can move on, and Mr. Paul...
Mayor.
Hello? Can you hear that? Mr. Schnall, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Did you have a comment?
But I missed most of what's said at the end, what was the question?
I didn't have a question, I was just giving an update on the situation, sir.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, again, I reached out to Mr. Paul, who graciously decided to withdraw his name so that we do not have to have an election facing whether to have the election in November or in May, which both of them unfortunately look problematic for the virus. Mr. Paul has provided a letter that he asked me to read out loud, which I will take a quick moment to do so, dated today. Dear Mayor Trevino, we're acutely aware of the impact the coronavirus pandemic is having in every community, including Castle Hills. In this time of high risk to public health, there has been discussion about the possibility of moving the city council election to November from May, when the virus is forecasted to potentially be at its most dangerous period. We simply cannot permit our residents to be exposed to the risk in order to participate in next month's election. At the same time, the possibility of a fall election is equally problematic for other reasons. Certain council members would serve as holdovers and remain in office until November, including in place 4, where the incumbent has chosen not to seek reelection. The council member would be directly involved in the city's budget process for the fiscal year, this is the same council member whose behavior during the last two years, in my opinion, has significantly harmed the city's financial health. Simply stated, neither May nor November are suitable times for the election without posing significant risks of some sort to our city. There is only one contested race in this election for place 5 alderman. In the interest of our community's health, well-being, and long-term progress as a city, I believe our best option would be for one of the candidates to withdraw so that an election is longer required, and a new, stable, and responsible city council can be put in place. Both Mr. Gregory and I have been asked to consider the option. Just as I was the first to raise my hand to run for the place 5 seat, I must now be the one to raise my hand to resolve the lesser of two evils choice for the election dates. Therefore, I'm withdrawing my name for the consideration for place 5 alderman, given that place 1 and 4 council seats are uncontested. This withdrawal allows the city of Castle Hills, in accordance with state law, to cancel this year's election. This means that Jack Joyce will take place 4 seats sooner than later to support the forward movement of the city, started by place 1 alderman Joe Isbrand, who will now serve a full term, and place 3 councilman Kurt May. I care greatly for Castle Hills and all residents who have lived here, I'm grateful for the outpouring of support that I've received, yet to recognize that my first responsibility is to advocate for the common good and public well-being of our city. I'd like to thank Mr. Frank Paul for that, and possibly saves us approximately $7,000 for not having an election. Mr. Schnall, how do we proceed?
Mayor, I believe that there is a certificate signed by Mr. Rappley to confirm that there were no write-in candidates, that with the withdrawal of Mr. Paul, there are no uncontested races in the city for the May 2 election, and there is, I believe, ordinance number 2020-04-01, which would cancel the May 2 election and declare the unopposed candidates elected. That ordinance would provide, could be adopted this evening to allow Mr. Rappley to notify the county elections administrator of the city's decision and solidify the savings of the dollars you mentioned earlier. The three candidates, three unopposed candidates, would be eligible to take the oath of office on or after May 8, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall, and in front of me, I have the certificate of withdrawal signed by Mr. Paul. Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council's being passed out right now, the ordinance, which would cancel the election. Anybody need a copy?
Does anyone have a copy?
Excuse me? Oh, I was gonna give you mine, but Mr. Rappley's on top of it.
I would like to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I certainly think... I certainly think that Mr. Paul should be commended for a very patriotic duty here. I agreed with Mr. May last time that putting off an election from May to November was over the top. So, you know, if there was no other option, and we had asked if there was, then it really was not a good move. But it's also true that aside from the residents, the poll workers would be at risk. And as we know, they're all senior citizens, so I really think Mr. Paul is to be commended and thanked for his very generous action.
I wholeheartedly agree, Ms. Winger. I believe, Mr. Schnell, that we need a motion to adopt the resolution. Is that correct? Or the ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I would not hear Ms. Winger's comments, or I need to respond. I would like it summarized for me, but it would be appropriate for the governing body to adopt the ordinance so that Mr. Rappleyh could notify Becky Callen that the city is not going to be needing the election in either May or November.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. May.
I move the city council adopt ordinance number 2020-04-01, as written.
Second.
Yeah, first, and the second. Any further discussion?
May I just make a comment?
Mr. Isbrand.
I would like too to echo Ms. Winger's statements of Mr. Paul and the statesmanship that he's demonstrated here, and his commitment to the public health and well-being of this community, that he would recognize that there was no good option here, and had great respect for the democratic process, but yet recognized that there was not an opportunity to do something here that wouldn't perhaps risk the well-being of our community. And it was a sacrifice on his part to do this. I think it is a real testament to him, and I'm personally very grateful to him for his action today.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Gregory?
A long time ago, I was the one who nominated Mr. Paul to originally come on the council. And the action that he's taken today is in, it is consistent with the character of the man that I nominated at that time. And I want to appreciate his activity and actions tonight.
I agree.
Mr. May.
I just wanted to note, if Mr. Paul is listening, I think this was one of the most selfless things I've seen from a public servant in a long time. And it's the kind of thing we're going to need more of if we're going to fight the current the current virus that's in the community. And so with that in mind, I just want to say to Mr. Paul, I hope you take an active role continuing into the future, because the hallmark of a great leader is someone that puts their own interests second to that of the interest that they're serving, which is the city in this instance.
Thank you, Mr. May. I'm going to just check and see if Mr. Sanderson has any comments. Mr. Sanderson?
I didn't hear the question.
I'm just checking to see if you had any comments in relation to the motion on the table.
I have no comments at this time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we'll proceed with the roll call vote. Mr. Isbrand?
Aye.
Mr. May?
Aye.
Mr. Sanderson?
Aye.
Ms. Winger?
Aye.
Mr. Gregory?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you so much, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Paul, for your selfless service to the city of Castle Hills. We will now proceed to item number four, old business. Public hearing on the replant application of David Lewis for a replant establishing Lewis subdivision number two. The proposed replant will create four lots from attractive land, which is 2.693 acres, and located in lot two, block five, county block 5778 of Lewis subdivision, recorded in volume 9714, page 120 of the deed and plat of records of Bear County, Texas, and part of lot six, arbitrary 6F, block five, county block 5778, land recorded in volume 11514, page 1529 of the official public records of Bear County, Texas, establishing lots A, B, C, and D, block five, county block 5778, in the city of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas. It is 5:33. We're going to open the public hearing.
Nobody's here to speak on it.
I don't hear anybody. I'm going to check my email real quick and see if anybody's emailed in. We don't have anything. I think I see Mr. McCormick on the line. Mr. McCormick, did you have any comments for the public hearing? Okay, there's no comments. It is 5:33. We'll close.
Well, does anybody in the room have any comments?
I assume I'll be able to speak.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lewis. You'll speak on the next, on the actual agenda item. If there's nobody else? So this is public hearing for just general, and if you want to speak to the actual agenda item, or if you want to speak on both?
I'm happy to speak just one time. You tell me where it's most appropriate.
Okay, sir. It's 5:34. We're going to close the public hearing and proceed to item number five. Discussion and possible action on replant application of David Lewis for a replant establishing Lewis subdivision number two. The proposed replant will create four lots from attractive land, which is 2.693 acres, and located in lot number two, block five, county block 5778 of Lewis subdivision, recorded in volume 9714, page 120 of the deed and plat of records of Bear County, Texas, and part of a lot six, arbitrary 6F, block five, county block 5778, land recorded in volume 11514, page 1529 of the official public records of Bear County, Texas, establishing lots A, B, C, and D, block five and county block 5778, in the city of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas. Possible executive section pursuant to Texas government code 551.071 consultation with attorney. Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Rappleyh.
Just as a recap, this item was brought forward at the March 10 city council meeting. It was tabled, and myself, as city manager, was directed by city council to engage a third-party engineer for a review of the plat process and any other factors involved in this particular application. I engaged CEC to do the independent review. I provided counsel last night a copy of that review. It's at the bottom, or should be in your packets there, on the desk there. We have representatives from CEC on the line, Ruben Guerrero and Douglas DeCino. And then we have Abe Salinas from LNV on the line as well, in case you need to ask any questions to either engineers in regards to this. And of course, Mr. Lewis here to discuss anything regarding the application.
Mr. Lewis, this is your agenda item. Would you like to go first, or would you want to hear from the engineers on the phone?
I would rather hear from the engineers on the phone first.
Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Rappleyh, any preference between LNV and CEC first?
No, I think right now we can start with CEC. They can give you kind of their summary of what they reviewed and their opinion based on the letter received.
Okay, we have two people from CEC on the line. I'm not sure which one.
Hello?
Should be Ruben Guerrero.
Mr. Guerrero?
Hello, this is Ruben Guerrero, CEC, Senior Project Manager. And I'm accompanied by, and this is Doug DeChicchio, Project Engineer.
Mr. Guerrero, I'm going to ask you if you can speak a little bit slower, just so we can hear you properly.
Can I get the spelling of the person we're talking to?
It's in the agenda packet, Ms. Winger.
Oh, it is? Because I don't see that name.
It's also in the letter at the.
Yes.
Oh, Guerrero. Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Guerrero.
Thank you. Yes, CEC has completed the requested third-party review of the replant listed on item four or five. We reviewed all the plat documents originally reviewed by LNV with the appropriate sections within the requirements defined by the Castle Hills Code of Ordinances, dated May 14, 2013, but last updated on May 24, 2018. CEC concludes that we concur with LNV's position that the plat should be recommended to be revised and resubmitted.
Thank you, Mr. Guerrero. Mr. Rappleyh, bring LNV on now?
Yes, if you'd like, Mayor. Abe Salinas is on the line.
Mr. Salinas, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Abe Salinas with LNV, serving in the capacity of the city engineer. In response to the public hearing comments that we heard on March 10, we had a citizen comment and council request for some additional information regarding adverse impacts to the property. And as such, we revised our letter citing Article 5, Section 40-212, the Stormwater Drainage Criteria Code of Ordinances. And in there, there's specific information and guidance regarding the engineer, the developer, providing information to satisfy 2,000-foot downstream analysis. And so that's what we're currently recommending and requesting from the city, or the developers, engineers, to provide that information so that we can help quantify further the potential for adverse impact.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Mr. Schnell, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any comments at this time, Mr. Schnell? Yes, sir.
Well, in view of the comments from both Mr. Guerrero and Mr. Salinas, the council still has three options before it. Option one, which the engineers are not recommending, is to simply approve the plat as submitted. Option two is to approve the plat on the condition that the property owner and his engineer provide the information required in regard to Section 40-212 of the city code of ordinances, in regard to the drainage concern that Mr. Salinas and Mr. Guerrero have referred to in correspondence and in letters to the city. The third option is for the council to disapprove the plat on the basis that the plat does not comply with Section 40-212 of the code of ordinances. Those are the three options. If the council either conditionally approves or disapproves, any motion to that effect must specifically, or should specifically, reference the reason being noncompliance with Section 40-212 of the city's code of ordinances.
40-212. Is that correct, Mr. Schnell?
Yes, sir.
It's also on the second page of CEC's report, Ms. Winger. Mr. Lewis, would you like to speak now?
I appreciate everybody being here under such adverse conditions that we are experiencing. I hope that everybody's family is doing well, and that all their friends and relatives are doing well also. I have had from the engineers, LNV, first a conditional approval, recommending that the city council approve conditionally this subdivision, this plat.
Mr. Lewis, can you step a little bit closer to the microphone?
Sure. I was trying to keep my breath off of it. But anyway, yeah, I've had two letters. One was a conditional approval. And then it was determined that I needed to have more information. So basically, LNV rescinded their contentional approval. And then I proceeded to spend another two months in getting all the i's dotted and t's crossed that we needed to have done, because I don't mind rules. I mean, in fact, I like rules because it makes it a lot easier for someone like me to come in and either get a variance or replat or what have you. I do like to have the rules administered equally. And I do know that there's two subdivision plats that were approved that I was somewhat involved in. One I did, and the other one I was involved in with Mr. Baker. And there's requirements that are being asked of this one that are far, you know, reaching than the other two. So, and that's okay. If that's the rule, then I will do whatever needs to be done. But when I got my second approval from LNV, and this was not conditional. This was the city engineer approved it, and, you know, I've spent probably, not that it really, the money isn't an issue, but, you know, $15,000, $20,000 in getting through all the steps, checking all the boxes, and doing everything that I'm supposed to do. I do appreciate that we don't have the type of meeting that we had last time, where a lot of irrelevant information was brought in, and things that really just need to be focused on state law and the plat itself. So I have now another approval letter that I guess is being rescinded again. And hopefully, I'll have a third approval letter at some point. But I will say this. Had I been given this rule upfront, had been in the ordinance explicitly stating that I had to have a 2,000-foot study to see the adverse effects of the water in this situation, the stormwater, it would be done. You would already had it. We wouldn't be having this discussion. So if that's what needs to happen, I would appreciate that it be approved conditional upon this item that I didn't know needed to happen, and I had already had an approval from the city engineer suggesting that I didn't have to have this. Now, I know that neighbors were concerned of rainwater, I mean, you know, coming and stormwater. But I will say that I don't know if this is something that is only for replats. But whatever the rule is, and worried about stormwater, I would think that this rule should apply to anybody with a certain amount of impervious coverage. I mean, there was a new house built that, by Mr. Baker, that probably has with its driveway and its house, I looked it all up and calculated, probably has somewhere in this vicinity of 20,000 square feet of impervious coverage with the new road going to his house and the houses still. I don't know exactly, but I do know that the three houses, and I'm only adding two lots, both of those lots would be about 6,000 square feet of impervious coverage, which would be 12,000 square feet. And if we did all three, if you counted the house that's existing being torn down and a new house being built, you'd have about 18,000 square feet of impervious coverage, which would be equal to somewhat a new house that was built with a large driveway, that I'm being required for a replat to possibly, you know, do another study to make sure nothing's happening. Whereas, there's been others that have had situations that weren't required to do this. I don't like the idea of flooding in Castle Hills. I know it's a huge issue for the city. And in fact, my driveway is at the bottom of Hibiscus. And every time it rains, three inches, or, you know, a 100-year storm event, I, at some point, can't get into my driveway. So I do know that there's an issue that needs to be addressed. I just want it to be addressed equally. I don't want to be the person that's picked out of the crowd, and now we're going to be doing this. So instead of just denying me, it would make me feel a lot better, having been approved basically twice by the city engineer, that you approve this with the condition of, and I will have the study done. In fact, they're actually working on it as we speak, for I was expecting that we were probably going to have to do this study. And I do want to play by your rules. So I would appreciate if that was the outcome, and then we'll come back and the engineers can get back together and have their meetings again. And I really do appreciate that we're just doing a city council meeting without all the adverse statements that were. statements that were involved last time. I, I truly do appreciate that. Thank you for your time and, uh, I hope that you'll do that for me.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Uh, Mr. Baker?
Evening, Council. Quentin Baker, two thirteen, Hibiscus Lane. Uh, for the sake of brevity, we won't repeat all the arguments of the March tenth meeting. Um, cut right to the, to the punchline. That any better? Okay, very good. Um, we do have, uh, CEC's, um, report. I really appreciate council having commissioned this additional report. Um, fortunately, we can go right to the last paragraph for the punchline. Um, and we've already heard CEC say that they're recommending against the particular replat because of failure to meet the, the ordinance that was cited, City Ordinance, uh, number Article Five, Section forty dash two-one-two. All right? And as I remind you, uh, our property will be the direct recipient of most of the runoff in that land. It's not going into a drainage eechment or onto a street. It's coming right across the fence line and onto our property. So we would be the most affected citizens here sharing a long property line. So I'm going to ask you to deny this replat and I'll ask you to, to not, um, accept a conditional replat. Problem with a conditional replat is we have no idea how this study might come out or what the ramifications might be. Okay? And I, as a citizen, have no idea where this is going to go. I was told by David Lewis's engineer in the March tenth meeting that there was no, no real way to mitigate runoff from that property onto our property. He said specifically that no residential property he knew of put in detention to hold the water. And if you do put in detention, the net result is you simply concentrate the outflow into one location rather than having it spread over the land. So at this point, having heard from Kevin Love directly, I don't know that there's a feasible way to mitigate the runoff onto our land. And as such, I have to implore you not to put in a conditional approval for something that may in fact be infeasible at the end of the day. So let me reiterate my request to deny this replat. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Booth?
Hi, George Booth, one-two-four Dogwood. I represent the fact that he says that he was, uh, singled out or mistreated about his, uh, project. You know, I think we treat everybody equally here in Castle Hills. And, you know, if his neighbors choose to speak out against him or I choose to, that's our right. And I don't think that, uh, he's correct in saying, well, it's peaceful that it's, it didn't happen tonight. Because I'm going to say something. He did a project at two-twelve A Hibiscus. He was supposed to put in a driveway. That's not been done. For that reason alone, he shouldn't be approved to do anything. He also said if he did this project, if you all approved it, that he'd put a berm around the property if you all deemed it. Well, if you do that, I think you should say how high it should be, what it should be made out of, and cover all the specifics because in the past, he's been told to put berms up to protect the, uh, the runoff of the soil. He didn't do that because the Architectural View Committee failed to put it in their motion. And so those things sort of get forgotten. So I'm here to remind you that if you do pass this, you need to do under those conditions. He put his driveway in, that he said he was going to. I was at the meeting. It was agreed upon. And that he does the berm that he agreed to at the last meeting here. And what it needs to be made out of, the height, all the specifics. Because a berm to one person isn't a berm to another person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Have anybody else? Discussion?
Yeah, I have something.
Ms. Winger?
Um, you know, I think Mr. May was the one that, you know, brought up his concern about the runoff first at the last meeting. And, um, it, it continues to be a problem. Um, I'm very sorry that the original engineers didn't pick up on it because I think it was obvious to all the residents. It was obvious to most of us here. And, you know, it's not a good thing when that happens in the city. But at the end of the day, we have to be concerned about what the effect is on other residents and the fact that federal law in fact does put the onus on the city if we approve something that ends up damaging other people's property. So I had asked Mr. Lewis at the last meeting, given that he said he was surprised at, at how upset everybody was, if he was willing to make any changes. And he was not. And so that being the case, I, I would agree that, you know, we really don't have any option other than to, um, disapprove at this point. And I guess Mr. Lewis can make some changes and resubmit in the future. But it really is, what Mr. Booth is suggesting is not something that we can do tonight because it's not on the agenda. We can't start, you know, talking about berms and, and driveways. I had asked him that question, Mr. Lewis, at the last meeting, and he wasn't willing to do any of that. So there's no point in, you know, considering it now. And I, I would make a motion to disapprove because of the, um, to disapprove the plat, um, as Mr. Schnell said, uh, because it does not comply with Section forty point two twelve of the City Code of Ordinances.
That's your motion, Ms. Winger? Ms. Winger?
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to disapprove. Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Gregory. Discussion? Mr. Isbrandt?
Uh, may I ask a question? So, uh, maybe Mr. Schnell could answer this. I just want to make sure I understand, eh, my interpretation of the, the law, the rules here is if we disapprove this tonight, it still allows the applicant, Mr. Lewis, to come back for, to seek remedy based on his engineer's report later. Is that correct?
Mr. Schnell, did you catch that?
I'm trying to hear the rest of Mr. Isbrandt's comment.
Uh, he wanted to know if we disapproved it tonight, if Mr. Lewis can come back once he has the required documentation and, uh, basically pick up where he left off.
Yes, that is basically correct. That Mr., Mr. Lewis, um, has, um, as much time as he feels he needs, um, to, uh, come back to the council with a, uh, revised, uh, application or with the information that the city's engineers are requiring in regard to, um, the drainage issue.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. May?
I, I would just note the advice that we've been given by the city attorney on prior occasions. And that is that in a replat, we have limited discretion. And there has to be a firm, uh, pointing to a section of our ordinance that would be in clear violation. I am not in favor of voting this down and a hard no. I think the second option laid out by Mr. Schnell is the appropriate one because there are hard stops. And that hard stop would be a proviso, uh, to remediate, uh, the drainage that has been referred to in one of these several engineering studies. No one can be one hundred percent happy, uh, in these kind of circumstances. And I, I know both of these gentlemen that have spoken today, uh, are good and honorable. And I think a, a resolution can be had that's going to be in compliance with both state statute and our ordinances. So for that reason, I am not in favor of a firm no. Uh, but I would be in favor of a proviso and a yes.
Thank you, Mr. May. Uh, Mr. Sanderson, do you have any comments? Mr. Sanderson, are you with us?
Yes, I have no questions at this time. Yes, I'm sorry. I did not have the mute unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Winger, any further comments?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any further comments?
No. Did he hear the motion?
He said, I, I can ask him if he heard it.
Yeah, I heard.
Well, he made the second. I'm sorry, Mr. Gregory did. Uh, Mr. Sanderson, just to confirm, you heard the motion on the table?
I can repeat it?
Mr. Sanderson, did you hear the motion on the table?
Can you repeat it, Mr. Mayor?
I didn't understand that. Did you?
I, we didn't understand you.
Can you repeat that?
Uh, Ms., uh, Mr. Mayor, can you repeat the question? Can you repeat Ms. Winger's question? Can you repeat her question?
Yes, uh, Ms. Winger will repeat it right now.
The motion is to disapprove, um, because the mo-, because the plat does not comply with Section forty-two-twelve of the City Code of Ordinances.
I fully understand the, uh, the, the motion and, uh, if there's already, not a second, I second it. I believe that it's already seconded.
Okay, but do you have any questions, comments for this motion item?
I have no questions at this time. No, sir.
Okay, Ms. Winger?
No, I.
Mr. Gregory?
The last paragraph of the recommendation simply says because of a, of a co- ordinance Castle Hills has on the two-thousand-foot downstream impact analysis, they do not recommend approval.
Hey, ever? Out of the bathroom? Ever?
I'm sorry, Mr. Sanderson, can you repeat that?
I, I apologize. I, I made a comment to, uh, somebody here in, uh, in the house and, uh, I, I did not mute. My apologies. Is there a particular item here that I should be responsive to?
Okay, no, sir. I'll go ahead and mute you right now. Go ahead, Mr. Gregory.
And we also have an opinion from LNV, the original contractor. They do not believe, they believe it should be revised and resubmitted. You have both the original contractor and the second one, I mean, the original engineer and the second engineer, both basically saying, get all your ducks in a row so it can be approved. I think that shouldn't take too long if it's, if it's possible that it be done. They also had two recommendations. I don't know whether Mr. Lewis wants to do it. But they said, uh, if the developer intends on utilization roo-, roof rain collection, uh, and, uh, systems to mitigate the increase in the flow as noted by LNV, another option would be to include a deed restriction for this plat or a general note somewhere in the plat specifying the type of rain rec- collection system required. That's not a hard and fast thing, but that would be certainly a, uh, a, a good thing to have, uh, in the future for the future purchases. So I'm in favor of a hard no inasmuch as we have been advised by our attorney. Mr. Lewis can come back as soon as he has all the questions cleared up. And we can then have a clear submission and it can be clearly submitted or disapproved.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. I would just like to add that I understand both of your concerns, uh, Mr. Baker. I understand where you might not want additional water running onto your property. And Mr. Lewis, as a contractor, I, I feel your frustration with the game changing as you go along and I apologize for that. Um, hopefully this can be the last, uh, issue that we have to deal with that can make everybody happy and we can move forward from here. That being said, we're going to go ahead and do a roll call vote, uh, to completely disapprove. Just to clarify, uh, Mr. Sanders, I'm sorry, Mr. Isbrandt?
Aye.
Mr. May? Mr. Sanderson?
So, uh, if this is for, if, if this were outright disapproval, uh, I believe that's what the, uh, question is. And, and the answer for me is aye, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanderson. Ms. Winger?
Aye.
Mr. Gregory?
Aye.
Okay, uh, that is four to one. The ayes have it. That is it. Um, hopefully we can get this finally taken care of in the not-too-distant future. Uh, lastly, announcements by mayor and city council members on items of community interest. Mr. Isbrandt?
I have nothing this evening, Mayor, except to continue to wish everyone good health.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Isbrandt. Uh, Mr. May?
Just a reminder out there, those who are listening, uh, let's support our local business, especially those with the takeout and those things that we can do and still be safe.
Mr. Sanderson?
But I, I, uh, I heard line unmuted, Mr. Mayor. Are you calling for me to go ahead and have my announcement?
I, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you. Uh, we're doing community announcements and it's your turn.
Community announcement, yes. Uh, Mark Sanderson, uh, position two. Uh, I am, uh, unfortunately, I'm having force to go ahead and offer my resignation this evening. I will be sending the city manager a, an email to that effect. Um, uh, it has been a distinct honor to serve with some fantastic people. Uh, I got to know wonderful folks in Ruston, a great city. It has been a, uh, an unbelievable challenge. Uh, we, uh, we decided to go ahead and, and, and take our, our life elsewhere, uh, my family and I. And, uh, we are, uh, kind of in a new chapter and new phase in our life. Uh, we appreciate, uh, the, the support and, uh, and the, the honor of being elected to, uh, uh, the, uh, the representative, fine people of the city of Castle Hills. So, uh, and Mr. Uh, 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 city manager, you should, you should expect a, a email from me shortly, uh, to that effect. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sanderson. We appreciate your service. Ms. Winger?
No comment.
Mr. Gregory?
As if everybody isn't tired of hearing about this virus at this stage of the game. Apparently the next two weeks are absolutely critical, uh, for everybody to just hunker down and watch television till their mind goes numb and read a book or two and enjoy your family. But above all, stay at home and relax. And when income tax comes around in April, the two weeks will be over. And, uh, but that's all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gregory. Uh, I just want to echo everybody's comments about the COVID-nineteen epidemic, uh, pandemic. There has been an outbreak in San Antonio nursing home. Just extra words of caution to do your part to social distance, wash your hands so that we can flatten the curve because the issue is the lack of medical care, as everybody already knows. I have been on calls with all the area city managers and mayors, uh, twice a week, trying to stay up to date with everything that's going on between the latest information and practices and procedures for the city. So know that, uh, all the department heads as well as the city manager is doing the same thing. And we just want everybody to be safe so we can get back to life as normal. I would like to thank the police and fire department, uh, for wishing one of our youngest residents, Noah, eleven-year-old, happy birthday. They showed up to his house with the police cars and the fire trucks and made a, uh, unfortunate situation a little bit better just by being who they are. So thank you all so much for that. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First. Second, Mr. May. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Six oh six.